So. Yeah, we're gonna have, we're gonna have our hands both of them in different ways.
Okay, I see we have a quorum and somebody may join, but let me go ahead and. Start the Monday, August 21st, 2023 Planning Commission at 7:00 PM. First is roll call. I am the Chair, Luke Maruziak. Vice Chair. Commissioner Tesman.
This is hand raised.
Commissioner Aleth.
Present.
Commissioner Kilkup.
Present.
Mr. Crone.
Present.
Mr. Lambert. Okay, and Commissioner Smith sent an email two weeks ago that he'd be out today, so. That he be excused. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So Commissioner Smith is excused. I will give it a few more minutes as we get going. For Commissioner Testament and Lambert to show up, and if not, I'll take a vote on whether to excuse them or not. Okay. I'd like to move that we alter the agenda to move up. The ADU Draft Amendment, because it will be continuation of a public hearing right after public comments. Can I get a second? Did that change?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we will move the agenda number two up to public comments. Are there any public comments? Not on the agenda? Okay. I'm going to reopen the public hearing that was originally opened on August 7th. And those wishing to speak during the public comment will have the opportunity to do so. Have to state their name, city residents for the record, direct comments to the commission as a whole, not individual members, not a time to have questions of the commission. Please listen to comments. So I'd do members of the public that were. Any members of the public that wish to speak? I see. Yes. Okay. I see. Oh, I see. Commissioner Tesman, could you? Promote him to panelists? Tesman is present. Alright. Are there any of the online folks? I see two attendees that wish to comment on the ADU Code Amendments. Okay, seeing no hand up? At this point, we'll close the public hearing that was originally open on August 7th. Close it on August 21st. It's 7:04 PM. Alright, now let's move on to the discussion of this ADU Draft Amendment. We did have input into the public via email regarding parking. A requirement with the ADU, and I understand staff has comments in regard to that.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, can you hear me? I'm Jonathan Kessler, AICP Senior Planner with the city.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Um, yeah, so we did tweak our crosswalk that was in your packet. And to just give clarity to that, because we are not on a major transit route. So the only applicable parts of the change in the state law are the ones cited, if you look at page one of the. Crosswalk. In the second block, so it talks about the existing code. And if you look over. It is. Between on that block, my bad, it's, uh, you see. We removed that section talking about, oh yes, I'm sorry, at the second page on the first block, so the existing code. Only required one off-streets parking space in addition to that, which is required by the underlying code. And basically it broke it down by the square footage of the lot. And it's essentially saying the city or county may not require more than one off-street parking space per unit. As a condition of permitting development of accessory dwelling units. Uh, with a lot size of less than 6,000 square feet, if it's larger than 6,000, it would be two. But the code actually just requires one, and it doesn't differentiate between. Lot sizes. So essentially, we're, we're good on that. I think the confusing part had been the part about the transit, and that's not applicable to Snoqualmie, because we don't have. Anything that would qualify now or in the foreseeable future for a major transit stop that would mandate no off-street parking.
So we can require one off-street parking space, but not, but not more than one.
Uh, under 6,000 square feet, and actually, you can. We could require, per the new regulation, it says, or require more than two off-street parking spaces per unit. As a condition of permitting development of accessory dwelling units on lots greater than 6,000 feet. So they do. They do differentiate in the new state law and our existing code, it's just the one. Uh, so it's, it's, it's fine.
Doing to say it's fine, the concern. The public hearing is addressed. We basically will. Request that those who wish to put an ADU. In on their lot have a parking space. We're okay with that.
Correct. So being good as in the, our minimum requirement of that one off-street parking is fine across the board. As far as the new state law goes and, and doesn't need changing at all. So that's, we're, we're good with that.
Okay. Any other discussion from, I'm sorry, Community Development Director Artetia?
Oh, yes, um, Community Development Director Emily Artetia. Jonathan, did, did you want to point out where the? In, in chapter 1765, where the parking spot? Has been retained for ADUs?
Yeah, 1765, 150, Table 1. So that was the existing code requirement. So it just essentially will maintain that existing code requirement in that table. And it is mentioned also in 175570G. So tho- those are the two, two areas, two parts of the code we're citing.
Okay. So I'll ask, any discussion points, Commissioner Aleth?
Uh, yes, I spent some time thinking about Ms. Rich's letter to us, and I realized that. She brought up some very valid points, independent of whether or not we can give her any relief. And I was wondering, what are our options for referring her concerns to the appropriate city department? Specifically, she talks about inappropriate or insufficient enforcement of existing parking. And that, that seems like I keep complaint that she should, she has every right to get it to her ass.
I believe that would be our code enforcement through our, our building official. I mean, she certainly can file a complaint if she feels like that's occurring, and then. That the investigation could go forward from there. Commissioner.
Is there anything further for us to do with the letter, or does she need to follow up with a complaint of some sort?
Uh, well, Commissioner, she, she would need to like submit a formal complaint, because it's complaint driven, so it would trigger. It would trigger the investigation at that point, so. It, you know, the complaint form would cite like the transgression, you know, the specific. Violation that she's complaining about, and that would be investigated appropriately.
Great. Okay, so I just want to summarize where we are. She submitted a letter. She expressed some concerns about parking. She also expressed some concerns about how parking and our pending. Change on accessory dwelling units relate to one another. We reviewed the state law. We've determined that. We're complying with the state law, and we are, we are not empowered to add additional off-street parking as part of the changes to the state law. And to follow up on her complaints, we can connect her with a process for submitting a formal complaint.
Yes, that's correct. We can reach out. We have our email and give her direction on next steps in the process.
Great. Let's do that, please, to make certain that we follow up. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Good, good. Vice Chair Tesman, any comments?
No, I mean, I'm glad that essentially the one, one off-street parking space is preserved for the less than 6,000, and then two for greater than 6,000 makes sense, so. I think that's the best we can do under the law.
Okay, Commissioner Crone? Uh, no comments. I fully agree with Commissioner Tesman. Okay. Commissioner Kilkup?
I just have one question. If we're talking about off-street parking, and is that equal to onsite parking? Or?
Yes, Commissioner, anywhere onsite, that would be designated for parking, so it doesn't necessarily mean a garage, but it could mean a garage, a carport, or a. Driveway. And it does mention that in the code. Trying to with, uh. Let's see what section that is, but it, it, as long as it's off-street in the area that we designated for parking, and that would include a driveway.
Okay, then I am satisfied.
Good. Any other comments? Alright, thank you. Thank you, staff.
Thank you.
At this point, we're going to close that item, and. The ADU Draft Amendment, can I get a motion to move that forward? The Community Development.
So moved?
Yes. Okay. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we are happy with the ADU amendments as written. Okay, now, you see Councilmember Johnson, thank you for your patience as we did the public hearing, and we're ready for the council liaison report.
Greetings, Commission. Councilmember Johnson. I have a few items for you tonight. First, I got to attend both the pancake breakfast with the fire department on Saturday morning. With the kids, and they got to wear their nice little fire hats, sit in the truck. It was lots of fun. And then we went down to Snoqualmie Days and walked around, saw the booths, and had a really good time, and got to watch the parade go by. So it's always fun getting to enjoy all those community events we have over the summer before all the rain comes. That said, I am really looking forward to the fall. Pumpkin spice lattes. PSLs. On other things, the Snoqualmie Parkway repaving continues, of course. There have been delays for weather and some other traffic impacts in the area. Hopefully, it will be done within the next few weeks-ish. Rain could delay things even worse. That's part of why we're trying to get it done as fast as we can, as frustrating as it is for all of us. And it's especially frustrating that it's overlapping in time with other major construction, road construction projects in the area. But, you know, the, in, in Canada, they say they have the construction season, and we kind of have the same. We also awarded a, as the council awarded a design contract with Absure Construction Incorporated for the community center expansion. By the end of the year, I think, or very early next year, I don't remember the exact date, but anyway. Around that time period, we will have a great, a greatest maximum price and construction level engineering designs. With options for the community center expansion. There are all kinds of bells and whistles that we could have or not, depending on what we can afford and what they come up with. The Parks and Public Works Committee will be reviewing periodically over the next few months, the progress of, of that contract. And looking at how far we are along with, with the designs and with the projected costs. And if the project as a whole just seems like it's ballooning to, you know, 30, 40, 50 million dollars or something, then we'll go, okay, hang on. Let's send this on to council, and let's review if we really think that this is reasonable, or it could be that, oh, hey, look, things are looking great. This is well within budget. We don't know. That's why we awarded the contract is so that we can find out. Let's see. Yeah, and as we go through, we'll provide feedback as a committee on the Parks and Public Works Committee to both the city administration and to the contractor as well. The other thing I want to let the commission know about is that Councilmember Watten is leading an Affordable Housing Roundtable, which will be on September 14th. I believe that's a Thursday from, I believe it's 8:30 to 11, if I remember correctly. And there, they will be discussing a number of parcels that are owned by the city, and they're within, obviously, the city limits. Not in the UGA, the urban growth area, and that will be about several parcels that we think might have some buildable land on them for affordable housing. There is a group of developers and consultants that, over the last couple of years, have come together in this Affordable Housing Group. That's really Snoqualmie Valley wide, but we're, of course, focusing on just the city. That includes the Atlas Design Group, SMR Architects, Old, Old Devi, Old Devi Builders, Circliving, Banner Bank, Umpqua Bank. And I believe Habitat, along with. Humanity, that is, along with a few other groups. So we'll see if something seems like it is possibly buildable on that land. It could come back that really, there's just not enough space there to build something, or. The cost differential for affordable housing just doesn't pencil out, and if that's the case, then, okay, now we know. But we will be holding that roundtable, and hopefully some progress can be made. There just aren't a whole lot of lots that are buildable in the city anymore, and we want to fit as much affordable housing as we can in the remaining land that we do have. So that's what I have for you folks tonight. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Could you repeat the day and time for the roundtable?
Yes, it is on September 14th, and I believe that it was 8:30 to 11, if I remember correctly. I don't know the location, though. Do you have to remember? Community Development Director Artetia, what the location is for the roundtable? Okay, it's just gonna be here. Okay, perfect.
See, Commissioner Aleth has his hand up?
I wanted to propose that the Planning Commission have at least one person able to attend that meeting. I am available, but I certainly also don't want to force a quorum by accident, so I just want to make certain that we coordinated this well.
Yeah, I might not be available that day, so I'd be happy if Commissioner Aleth attends.
As would I. I'm out of town.
Uh, it was, the event will be noticed, I believe, as a public meeting. Is that correct?
Okay, thank you.
So you should be okay, even if a quorum did it.
Oh, okay, good.
Yeah, it's perfect. Thank you. I didn't realize that.
Yeah.
Good.
Other questions for me?
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next agenda item is approval of the minutes dated August 7th, 2023, and just a small note. At the very end, you say that the next meeting is going to be September 5th, and it's a, should say the next meeting is going to be Monday, August 21st, today. Other than that, I found the minutes to be accurate. So can I get a motion to approve those minutes as amended?
So moved.
Get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so the minutes of August 7th, 2023 are approved with that note that the next meeting date should say August 21st today. Moving on, we have item number three, EDC Recommendation on Economic Development Element. And Steph is, you plan to give a background on this?
Yes, hello, Emily Artic, Community Development Director. The EDC started work on the economic development element late last winter. You know, approximately November-ish, and continued their work all the way through August on a revised economic development element. On August 16th, Chair Bobby Harrison signed a recommendation to the Planning Commission forwarding you the work. That the EDC concluded with, which is attached to this recommendation. In the subsequent spreadsheet entitled Economic Development Policies Final Draft. This final draft is a complete evolution of. The policies with changes that were made at strategic points, including. Commissioner Rob McDonald's final comments in the last column. I apologize, it just says Rob's there, but. You know, we aren't too complicated when it comes to, you know, who people are and how they make their comments, but Commissioner McDonald made some. To have changes. There were thoughtful changes, and that did take him a number of hours to read through and, and provide these to the staff, so we were able to. Incorporate his changes in this set of recommendations that the chair signed on the 16th. So that being said, I'm, I'm happy to walk through each one of these with you, answer any questions, or a combination of all.
Well, in, in general, I think kudos to the Economic Development Commission, went through the changes, and they seem very thoughtful. There was one interesting one on 0.0 in Rob's comment. He added the word visitors to the list, so it's not just. A vibrant small committee offering goods and services for residents and beacon for employers, but he added residents and visitors. And I actually found that a significant potential change. For instance, I was in an event in Kent, actually, over the weekend, and. When we were here visiting, we'd go to like Saints and Scholars, a local place, we're in Kent, and we wanted to find something to eat. We wanted to look for something that we were all familiar with. So actually, with the little Caesar's gut pieces, so we could freeze it and do that, and. And I'm not saying that's a thing, all I'm saying is visitors might want to look for something. That, that they know, and something that we generally avoid it. So I'm just curious, did that conversation come up in the discussion?
And just to be clear, are you talking about 4.2?
No, actually, 0.0 on Rob's comment.
0.0?
Yeah, 0.0, the very, very first one, we're on topic.
So Visitors is also in the first column. I believe Commissioner McDonald.
There's some visitors, yeah.
Because I believe Commissioner McDonald was attempting to work within the same exact text, but. Rephrasing it in a way that made it more clear and transparent and. Flow, the, the language flow better.
Yeah, no, you're right, you're right. Yeah, my.
And Visitors shows up 11 times in this document.
Yeah, no, my, my, so. Is that? Oh, well, I guess the bigger question is, are we open to something that is non-local? That would might be more appealing to visitors? Was that part of the discussion?
Yeah, I mean, Visitors came up throughout the, the months of the commission working on these policies, for example, seeing 4.2. Create find, wayfinding signs that direct visitors, so we're all, we're constantly using the word visitors, because we are. And in this set of policies, very mindful about our tourism industry and the amount of visitors that come to Snoqualmie annually.
Right, right. And where I'm going with this is. It'd be nice to have an anchor. Visitor.
Center.
No, visitor center, visitor hospitality thing. So we try to have the woodman be that, that's why I was asking about the woodman. For, you know, if you come into the town and you go to the train station, you go somewhere, we've got a lot of nice little shops down the main street, but if you're going to do something. With a group, like I said, visitors may want to look for something very specific, and I think it's hard. If you just come into downtown Snoqualmie, and other than the train station, what you go to see something specific is an anchor for visitors.
Yeah, we, we did have, or we do have a staff member. Checking in on the woodman to find out if it's been sold, you know, and who, who, who may be interested in purchasing it. Yeah, we have a lot of interest in seeing that. Facility up and running again. I don't have a replacement for it, though, in the meantime.
I don't know, yeah, I don't know, maybe, but. Basically, basically, I'm asking the question is, we have avoided, for good reason, to keep the character of downtown, and actually, even on the ridge. That outside of Starbucks, we don't put chains in Snoqualmie, right? We, we don't, we just don't do it. And I remember I was on the EDC years ago, and we joked that, gee whiz, if they didn't end Out Burger, we not consider it, right? And so my only point is, is there something either local, and the woodman is an example, not, I'm not saying specifically. Or something that we would consider that we'd like to attract specifically for visitors? Because, because I think we do a very good job for locals, and locals get to know the places, get to know the areas, and we could, you know, we could talk about that. But I think if you're a visitor coming into town, and you're looking for anything familiar, or Keystone is an anchor. To go eat lunch or dinner, since like, I think it's, I think it's kind of a crapshoot, so that's my, that's my call. I don't know if people agree with that or not.
I'll comment. With retail and just local, I would say most people would look it up online. And generally speaking, I consider when corporations or national chains or anything to that effect, it does strip the soul out of the city. So worst-case scenario, it's successful, and there's like McDonald's or something, and everyone's going to McDonald's, then that's taking money away from our local businesses.
Right, right.
Rather than keeping the economy more local. So best-case scenario, we've got some minimum wage staff, people who will soon be computers. Taking orders. It just doesn't benefit the city. In the same way.
Yeah, there was actually the complaint about the Starbucks at the Safeway. That, uh, actually, there was a local coffee shop that shut down, maybe two, there's definitely one that shut down, it was that exact complaint. So, uh, yeah, we consider Starbucks local, or just.
Oh, right, I know. I feel like with an asterisk.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we have mod. Which is recognizable, it's like, are we talking national, regional, in terms of recognizable brands, but I think that should anyone feel so moved. Then they can just consult Google. To find a local hotspot pretty easily.
Yeah, yeah, I, I hear you. I, I think, I, I think there might be missed opportunity there. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go further than that, but for example. I would go to a little Caesar's for pizza. I would not go to the, the bowling alley down there for a pizza, right, unbolted, just, yeah.
True. But I would go to that Bar and Grill onsite, just on the visibility of it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you see it, and you're like, that's obviously a nice place to go grab a bite.
Where's that?
The Snoqualmie Bar and Grill?
Oh, yeah.
Is that, am I saying it right?
With a brewery?
Yeah, brewery, yeah, the brewery. I also think it depends on what you're looking for, ease and convenience, or that hometown flair. I have two young, wild children, so I'm obviously looking for something that that's acceptable. So not white tablecloths is usually our goal.
Fair enough, fair enough. I don't, I, I just wanted to have a little discussion of, uh. There is a little downside to being so local, but, but no, I hear you, I see. Oh, oh, sorry, do you have any? I see Vice Chair Jessman, or Tes, sorry, Vice Chair Tesman wants to jump in?
Yeah, thanks, Chair, and I'll beat dead horses, but, and Commissioner Kilkup, you know, I think you raise a good point. I think, Chair, towards. I think your point is in line with when we look at 0.0 with the generator sustainable tax revenue. Potentially, there's an argument there for the, for the kind of the chain. Potentially, there's an argument there for the, for the kind of the chain presence or whatever in Snoqualmie. I'd be curious. I'd be curious if we have any hard numbers on like what kind of revenues, what kind of tax revenues generated from, you know, take combined lumps, lump mod and Starbucks together versus, you know, Saints and Scholars and you know, the Thai place by the Chevron as an example, but, so I get your point. Obviously, there's not, there we, we do need sustainable tax revenue. We've got too much of a dependency on property taxes. So I get that. But I do, I would second Commissioner Kilkup's, you know, kind of articulation of, of the desire to keep Snoqualmie different and unique. And frankly, if you look at just the kind of aggregate data on chains, the Pacific Northwest compared to pretty much every other region of the US is pretty anti-chain. Just in general, and I think obviously we take that to another degree here in Snoqualmie. So I think that's something to keep in mind as this discussion goes forward. I guess the only thing that wasn't clear to me is if, if you saw an opportunity here in what we're reviewing that, that you would want adjusted, if, if, if there was consensus on bringing more of a national chain presence here. That makes sense?
Besides Little Caesar's.
Besides. It was something that we, we decided to go to because we knew it and it was kind of funny. But I don't know, if there was something, a chain that was high-end enough, I think it'd be worth considering. And again, when I was on the EDC, we joked that, well, In-N-Out Burger, we would carve out a spot to find. It was kind of funny.
No, it is. I think it's a great point because In-N-Out Burger would actually drive people here.
Yeah.
Right? You would regionally pull people into Snoqualmie to go to In-N-Out Burger.
And so that's what I'm saying, maybe, maybe we look for something like that, right?
And I would, you know, and I think this is probably true for pretty much everyone here, right, is unfortunately, when you want those chains, where do you immediately go? You go to Isco, you go to the Highlands or whatever, right? And so a lot of, a lot of tax dollars go over there. So I get it.
Yeah, I think a lot of people visit the falls and then go, let's go to Issaquah Gilman to eat or something like that, just because they know they can find everything there.
So yes. Chair, I'd just like to point out that the last policy I did read revolved around wayfinding signs and making sure that the visitors that do come at strategic points into the city know exactly how to get downtown. And one of those entry points is right here on Meadowbrook and Railroad, and the other one would be on the Parkway and Railroad. So we will continue to try and redirect folks. And then I should also say, should the potential model train museum even be?
That would be a good one.
Yeah, that folks, folks, the regional draw from that will force people to actually drive to downtown in order to drive out of downtown. So there'll be no, for example, there'll be no left-hand turn back onto the Parkway from the, the potential train, model train museum. Interesting dynamics there that could. And maybe by then we'll have the Woodman up and operating because that's a turnkey type of facility.
Yeah.
And the staff is anxious to continue to promote it.
Yeah, you know what I mean? It doesn't have been enough. That was one, right?
Could, it could be, it could be McMinimans, for example.
Really behind.
Yeah, and that is, that is more of a chain, like, you know.
Well, it doesn't have to be a chain. When someone goes to South St. Louis, they go, you gotta go to Madonna Inn. And it was a ridiculously ornate place. I mean, you go there once, go, oh, this is really something. And you probably wouldn't do it twice, but nonetheless, everybody was there and every, every freshman, your family would go through there and they would talk about it later. And it'd be nice to have something like that in Snoqualmie as part of the economic development. The reason I bring up the Woodman is it's the closest thing I can think of that was, that would have been something like that. But it'd be nice to have that as a goal, as an economic goal, to really look for something like that.
Well, I can bring that back to the Economic Development Commission for September as they look for new work program items to to pursue. And one of those is, of course, they are going to continue with their business visitations, you know, to help understand, you know, the, the business community and the needs they have and report back.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not sure if this was included as part of the wayfinding, but something as simple as a QR code for the falls, if you're there, that directs people to just local business, you know, local restaurants of places to eat or if we already have that, but let's just make it so easy for people who are unfamiliar.
Yeah. Yeah. I think the brewery actually is a good example of them. So much pretty close to that. Okay, good, good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, tourists, tourists. Tourist dollars, okay. So are we going to hear more on September 5th?
No, this item will, if it is your desire, this item will continue to move down. I think there's an opportunity for you to decide that tonight, you know, if you want to recommend this to the city's Community Development Committee for consideration.
I like the EDC, just to consider what we talked about, about a Keystone draw. And I like your comment about if you put it in an upper draw people. So again, I'm not saying that's the right answer, but something yeah, something, and the brewery is an example, something more like that downtown to draw people here.
So you're asking staff to take this back to the EDC for further work then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, just, just a tweet, just a little tweak on that for tourism. Okay?
Okay.
Any other comments from the commissioners?
I'd love to hear any other highlights that you thought you saw.
Off the top of my head, I don't have any. Well, let me just think for a second.
Councilmember Johnson, like the way I think, I just want to mention that another thing the council is working on is trying to shift center back toward its more retail-centered roots. So hopefully that will allow a center to be a little bit more competition for Gilman than what it is presently. And the other thing was, I'd actually really like to get a Wing Dretzke's, what's it called, the place in Canada, coffee shop?
Oh, I know what you're talking about.
Tim Hortons, there we go, yes. We get Tim Hortons.
Well, see, and why can't we do that?
But it's not actually good.
Yeah.
Sorry, was that sacrilege?
I would just say that the commission did an outstanding job focusing on specific areas that are highlighted in the Puget Sound Regional Council's 2050 Vision. So one of those areas is business recruitment and retention, business climate, planning and investment, and then enhancing and leveraging community assets. So those are the four areas that if you, if you go through the individual policies, you'll see these match up to those areas. And I thought that they did a wonderful job, considering that they also did an outstanding job thinking about the potential for the Meadowbrook, Meadowbrook retail area and enhancements that could happen there, even going as so far as to considering whether or not a district should be considered with specific, you know, retail percentages, some, something on the lines of what we have for downtown. So for example, you see retail on the main floor and professional on the second story. So they considered that. And then the signage that we talked about before, making sure that people know how to get here. And there was a lot of discussion about bringing in local businesses that are applicable to the environment of Snoqualmie. You know, the outdoor environment, you know, we do a lot of filmmaking, we do weddings here, we have sports and having access to retail that supports those areas was important to the commission.
Excellent. I see Commissioner Alef, you ever hand up?
I just wanted to comment that I was very impressed in reading through this document. Every time I had a question or a challenge, I read further and I found the answer to that challenge within the document. And I don't know, it, it was, it was super clear that there's a lot of thought and preparation that went into the preparation of this.
Yeah, no, good, good. Yeah, please pass that on to the EDC. Yeah, I just thought there was a, an opportunity to really look for a Keystone thing and because Meadowbrook actually pops out as well. Nobody goes, let's go see the elk and then, unless it's the golf course, right? All right, unless you're going to use the golf course. So that'd be a good, a good place to test it out of like, what would you accept there? The people would go, yeah, let's go see the elk and then go here. So.
Yeah, they could go to the golf course.
Yeah, that's it, that's it, right?
I don't know, they got a pretty nice restaurant there.
I have just a comment and anecdote. I think you said something about signage and I think that that is a pretty undervalued point. And my oldest daughter works at the Salish Lodge and they do not give specific instructions unless directly asked questions to other stores or restaurants in the area. Some of that's by design, some of that is just how, how they choose to handle the different, she works in the gift shop and she sees tons of people every day all summer long. And today, there was a great example of they, they happened to be out of sweatshirts because they had a great season. The tournament was last week. Lots and lots of people and they're gearing up for Christmas. And so somebody said, well, where can I buy more sweatshirts? Said, oh, we have, we don't have a shipment coming in for a little while. And you get a little further down the question chain and finally the way it was solved without betraying too much trust is, well, there is a shop just right down the road. The trading company could probably meet that need because they were looking for a specific thing for their kids and it was grandparents. It was a really great story, but I think signage will go a really long way because there are examples where people are looking for things and don't know how to get there. Just, I'm not sure that if that's valuable at all, but I just wanted to share that because that happened six hours ago.
Yeah, and I, well, I applaud your daughter being able to articulate, you know, the greater retail area.
Gift shop in Salish, right?
That's right.
Yeah, yeah.
The one, yeah.
Yeah, in fact, there had numerous sweatshirts on sale this Saturday because I walked by the trading post and I looked at the sweatshirts to see if I could find one for my son. They were just a little bit too small, but yeah.
Yeah, so I'd look forward to learning more about that because I think that there's a, it would certainly draw some people that stay at the lodge or come to visit the falls and
Yeah, one of the other ideas that has been discussed at the EDC is some sort of looped trolley or looped bus to pick people up from Salish Lodge, bring them to the mill, to the new mill site and then drop them off at the casino and then drop them off at downtown and then drop them off at, you know, the model train museum and then bring them back up to the to Salish Lodge. So you could get the full the full round.
Yeah.
Experience, you know, if we had something like that. We, we, we've also talked about the fact that we don't have taxi service. We don't have Uber service. You know, the, those are challenges.
It's an interesting idea as long as it doesn't get too hokey.
Yeah, it's just an idea at this point.
No, but I like it to deliver people from the lodge into the city. Because I think everywhere you come here, you might not venture in, but it's adorable. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I think again, I'm thinking of when I was there years ago, but we, the biggest concern was there's something like 3 million visitors annually to the falls. I don't know if that number is still accurate. And how many of those, after they visited the falls, went to downtown Snoqualmie? The other was, we used to think that was the number one attraction here. Actually, the casino was beating the falls. And again, how many people go from the casino and even consider coming down here? So I mean, yeah, there was a real desire to just make something a real tourist magnet downtown that folks who came to see the falls would come here.
What number did you say?
I thought it was 3 million.
It says 1.5 million visitors come to the falls every year.
And is it still number two to the casino?
I don't know, I have to look that one up.
At any rate, we'd want to capture as many of those as possible to come to downtown. Okay, I think I utterly regret hold that enough. I think the EDC did an awesome job. I think it would be good just to see if we could put a Keystone to see if they were putting a Keystone thing that we really want to track, something that's a magnet for tourists downtown. Or at center, but something if they come to the falls, you go, and we gotta go downtown. I think we're close, you know, between the brewery, the ice cream shop and stuff like that.
A policy that would encourage a Keystone.
Yeah.
There's also those passports, you know, that kind of idea of like the, the spots to hit. And it gives you a bit of a wayfinding on where to go and what order you might want to do it in. And it makes it kind of fun and playful, especially if there are kids involved.
Yeah.
I think in terms of terminology, if it's okay, less of the chain and more of a kind of a must-see place that you're talking about.
Yeah, I don't know if I was communicating it well. You guys are like, what?
I know, but like, like a McMinimans, which is a regional chain or anything that would be distinctive enough, like something where you can view the elk. It's like, have you seen that? And has that is memorable and it's weird if you've come to Snoqualmie and not seen it?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Also, I think it's a tall order. But a good idea.
Well, if we try, who knows, maybe we'll succeed. Okay.
Thank you.
Outstanding, okay. Well, that's agenda number three. Let's move on to the next agenda item, land. Wait, I'm sorry, is there anything, anything else, any other comments to the commissioners on this before we move on? Okay. Let's move on to land use element policy review. There we go.
Commissioners, we have Matt Covert from LDC here again to wrap up your discussion on the land use element. Are you there, Matt?
I am here, can you hear me?
Yes.
Evening Commissioners, thank you, Community Development Director Artic. What we're, what we've done is really great so far. You, you all have been provided some really great comments and thoughtful questions on the policies, the draft policies. Last, last order of business on land use element for now is the review of the draft goal statements. So I've prepared, like, like we've done before, just, you know, to kind of go through these, these goal statements and just kind of see how they sit with folks. Bearing in mind that, that goals are more general, they're more, you know, a general, general statements of, of desired states and conditions and trends. Policies are more actionable and specific. And the, the idea is to have you know, broad goals, specific policies that implement those goals. And so I will share, there's only, there's only eight of them. So we managed to keep the same number in our draft version at least that are, that's currently in the, the currently adopted comprehensive plan. That just kind of worked out that way. And we'll go through these and, and I'll just well, anytime folks have questions about one, please feel free to chime in and we will capture your notes and make sure that we've got, you know, a good set of, a good set of goal statements that are supported and supported by and supportive of the, the specific policy things that we need to do and like to do as a city. And we will go from there. So I will go ahead and share this. I'm going to be a pro at this now, now that Community Development Director Artic showed me how to do this. This is very cool. Can you all see this?
Yes.
So the, the general approach to these draft policies is to kind of take the existing goals, most of which were actually pretty good and rework them to have a more active voice and to modify some of the language to be more consistent with the policy approach, which, you know, there was some sort of wholly, wholly rewritten policy sections and, and of course, the state and regional requirements. Second. Alright, so draft land use goals. Maintain Snoqualmie's unique character and attractiveness with new development that complements the existing built and natural environment and allows a rich tourist and commercial center to thrive. and allows a rich tourist and commercial center to thrive. Number two. Feature and preserve the story of Snoqualmie's history and identity using buildings, districts and landscape with sustainable development that fosters civic pride. Number three. Pursue annexations that implement the future land use map designations. Number four. Encourage a compact development pattern of physically connected, distinct, complete neighborhoods that provide a balanced mix of land uses essential to the daily life of Snoqualmie residents, employees and surrounding rural area residents. Number five. Manage development and conservation within the 100 year floodplain to protect existing and new development from flood hazards and to promote enjoyment of the natural and scenic character of the Snoqualmie River shoreline. Number six. Plan for and encourage high quality residential areas that provide dwelling units of various type, density and costs to meet the needs and interests of every economic segment of the community, including low, very low and extremely low income households. Number seven. Develop a local economy that meets residents' everyday needs, supports a vibrant tourism industry, provides living wage jobs, enhances community distinctiveness and maintains a sufficient and sustainable tax base for the city. Number eight. Provide needed institutional and utility land uses within the community with minimal land use conflicts. And that's it. Any questions or thoughts? Commissioner Aleth.
Layer succinct to the point and active voice. Nice work.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. If there's no further comments, that was about the easiest goal presentation I can possibly imagine. So thank you.
Let me just ask any, any other comments?
Just to comment that, thanks so much because that was, this was a really fun review session, listening to all the work that went into this. Thank you. It's very well done.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Okay.
Have a great evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to the next agenda item, items of planning commissioner interest. And again, the woodman was the example I was bringing up or what was called in the hotel, I'm saying that so an example of what an item of interest could be. So let me poll the guys online first, Commissioner Aleth.
I do have a point, actually. And so, one second. I actually just happened to stumble across a mistake on our website for the planning commission today. It lists our meeting time still at 7:30 PM. It seems like something we should update unless somebody missed the meeting.
Good.
That was it.
Very good. Voice Chair Tesman?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Kilkup?
Nothing.
Commissioner Crown?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Okay. For me, this was, uh, I'm not sure what communication had happened from the start, the Boeing Classic to the end. But I thought we were going to have a real problem with the paving and they, and they kind of backed off. And part of it was rain and part of it seemed to be some input going on. So I don't know what conversations happened, but I thought that came off extremely well and it seemed to be extremely well attended. So again, you know, I'm not sure if that was serendipitous or somebody had something to do with it, but whoever gave some nudges, thank you, because I was concerned and that worked out quite well. And it also, I think it was extremely well attended, you know, we're at it for COVID, so. Anyway, I enjoyed that. One other thing I'd brought up, well, I did, I noticed there was a gigantic bike rally planned for, I think it was August 5th in that Centennial Park. And they were going to have live bands and the 50 mile bike run and kids and everything else. And end of July, like July 29th or 30th, they said, no, you know, we can't afford it, we just canceled the whole thing. And I was real curious as to, because it really looked interesting. I was like, wow, I could sign up for this bike ride and yeah, I was kind of curious if there was a, you know, what, what happened there? How did they not find funding for that? Gigantic was the name of the, the sports thing. Any, uh, anyone else know about that? Yeah, it was in 425 magazine everywhere. I actually saw it in local news, 425, it's like Snoqualmie hosts this thing. I went to the registration page, I go, oh, this is really great. And then 12 hours later, they go, oh, sorry, can't do it. And I was like, wow, what a shame. Yeah. All right, I was curious about that. All right, any other items of planning commissioner interest? No? Okay, future agenda list?
I'm Emily Arteche, Community Development Director. Unfortunately, it looks like the future agenda list was from 2022. Are you able to bring it up?
We're digging up, is it possible to have the chair of the EDC come to the meeting next week? Or I mean, at our next planning mission?
Yes, I will invite her to come.
Yeah, it'd be good, just to compliment them on the work, but also just have a conversation on that at one point before we throw it over to the committee. Actually, in the pause, we have not had Commissioner Lambert attend. And I've not received any input. Did we receive any input that he wasn't going to be able to attend? I don't think so.
No.
And as much as, you know, I really loved his input when he was here, we really need to insist that folks are here. So I expect to move that we count his absence as unexcused. And I'm open for discussion on that. Can I get comment? Second?
Second.
All in favor? I. Any opposed? Okay, let's mark Commissioner Lambert as unexcused absence.
Yeah, so we have the future agenda list up. I think there's an opportunity here if Jonathan Kessler, Senior Planner, still online to talk about the historic preservation and some next steps there.
Hello, I am Jonathan Kessler, Senior Planner with City of Snoqualmie. Thank you, Community Director, Community Development Director, Arteche. Yeah, so we have some really excellent video training that talks about historic preservation that's from the county. And it's in these bite sized pieces, like bite sized segments that we like to show over a period of several meetings. And it's just a kind of a step by step refresher of the, you know, mechanics of historic preservation and some features as it relates to, you know, here locally and in King County. So it's a nice refresher with some, with some good additional information, I think that. And like you said, they come in, it comes in segments, so we can take like easy, easy bits over several meetings.
If I could add one more.
Go ahead.
Comment, yeah, Emily Arteche, Community Development Director. So we have, we've got some new commissioners on the commission. And these, you could, new commissioners, and maybe even the existing commissioners, you, you may not know. But I'd just like to announce that the planning commission also has a dual role. And it has had a dual role for some time, maybe Chair Maruziak could explain how long, how much time's been going by. But the planning commission has been substituting also for the Historic Design Review Board. And they, they, they're indistinguishable at this point. And so this training was meant to help facilitate the work of the Historic Design Review Board and tell the city or Design Review Board up and operating and or performs or goes through a draft set of code amendments to address the fact that we can't get a Historic Design Review Board up and operating. There's, there's some specific requirements of the Historic Design Review Board. One member shall be from the Snoqualmie Planning Commission, one should be a property owner or business owner within the downtown or Meadowbrook. One should be a property owner or business owner within the downtown landmark. One should be of the Snoqualmie Landmarks and Heritage Commission, and one should be demonstrated an interest in historic architecture or local history or historic preservation. So it's our goal to get that Design Review Board up and running or and or go through whatever changes we would need to make to address this issue. But in the meantime, Senior Planner Jonathan Kessler has found this very, you know, nice, I guess, training opportunity to kind of help refresh you. So, you know, should you be called back in to do the Historic Design Review Board, you have more more knowledge and skill set in that area.
Good. As long as I've been involved in the planning commission, that's been a role. I know that Congressman Johnson remembers that happening quite often and yeah, I, I don't recall a time when there was a separate entity, it was always planning.
Well, that's all I have to say about that.
Okay. Excellent. All right. And then any more comments on the work program with the comprehensive plan?
Oh, so it it's our expectation that we would continue to steamroll through the remaining elements. And the next forthcoming element is housing. Hopefully you can appreciate that the work that the city did in, in the prior year and the first part of 2023. I won't, I won't say that it will be easy to get through housing, but a lighter lift and not a heavier lift. As much of the work that is involved with the formation of these goals and policies has been kind of accumulating through the housing needs analysis, the, the city one and Volst Valley one, and then the middle housing. And so three independent efforts plus the housing strategy plan have all assisted in aiding us to get to a point where we could get through the housing element with, without such an arduous process to go through. And then we'll proceed forward after that with, with other elements, including the transportation element.
Okay.
And so the comprehensive plan was the major work item for 2024. It's still on 20, 2023, it's still on 2024. We've added the historic preservation code revisions that I just mentioned. You know, coming up, you still have work to do on the mixed use final plan. And that's been updated to show 2023, October 2023. Multifamily tax exemption should be removed off of that. We went through a very pointed discussion with the council about, you know, whose work program that should be added to. So we will go back and update that to clear that off. And mill site design standards likely are going to need to be pushed to 2024. So at the, you know, we can continue to work on this and massage this. So we get a better, more defined work program for 2024, but those are the recommended changes that will need to be made on this for the next meeting.
Okay, and the wireless code update?
Yeah, we will probably push that to 2024, just so we can.
What does that entail?
The FCC has made some changes to their rules, their, their, their just call them their laws, their rules should be reflected in our own code. So we did a push to update our code back around 2015, 2015, 2016, several definitions have changed and several other policies have changed. So it is just a, it's an update facelift to kind of stay current, much like we just did for the ADUs.
Okay. Okay.
And that'll, that'll require a little bit heavier lift to work through the wireless policy group and some of the other industries that are out there, they have significant amount of participation that they go through when they start working with a local municipality. So we'll just have to gear up towards that effort. And right now our effort is concentrated really just with this comprehensive plan, so.
Okay, I was just curious, what it told it, it's interesting, okay?
Yeah, we, you know, we might be able to think about starting that, you know, sometime, you know, early next year or something like that.
Okay. All right. Community Development Director, anything else?
Nope.
All right, thank you. At this point, I move to adjourn the meeting. Second, second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, everybody. We adjourned at 8:07 PM.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.